For 120 classrooms. Gets really expensive. If we go state, if we go national contract, it's 293-753-82. The tech check quote is 258,952 dollars. Not install. Neither one of those is the install price. That's just equipment and that is commissioning and that type of thing and training. Installation, have it nationally installed, is 104,000 dollars. I am confident we can have an electrician install it all for under 50. Because there is, you know, we can get quotes from Mike Richards at Otter Electric and Josh Cassetta, Cassette Electric and whatever other electricians we use within the school district. And cut that down. If you go to the last page. The first, the second to last page are the costs of the three different types of intercom systems we looked at, we got quotes for. And if you look at Brothers Fire Alarm, the Valcom quote, if you add 100 classroom sound enhancement systems into it, it's only a $10,000 difference, $10,000 difference in price between going with the Cadillac made by Audio Enhancement. Tying in the doors, tying in the, you know, I think there's some value to that for the safety of our students. If we just go paging, just the paging system was a lot, lot more expensive, which I don't understand why, but that's the way the quotes came back. Now, if you look at the last page, that is the audio enhancement comparison between tech check and the PEPM national contract. And you can see that the tech check quote is 41,821 dollars less than the PEPM quote. Still a ton of money, not gonna lie. But I think for the safety of our kids, teachers need to be able to contact the office easily and the offices need to be able to contact the teachers easily. We have to have working bell system, you know. It's just tough to do it. Because it's split, I would say we order the paging stuff now because paging wasn't part of the SVPP grant, hold off until October to find out if we get the grant, which then would cover the classroom sound enhancement systems. That's what we talked about, right Jeff?
It is.
In the meantime, we can limp through with intercom with Simplex if we want to, or we can use the telephone system and I can work with Otter Tail Telecom to program, let's say Natalie, you're a teacher in the building, your phone would auto-answer and increase the volume to the max if Brenda Hanson intercommed into your room. So then the teacher could have talked back intercom without doing anything. Yes, you can hear it. No, it's not as loud as I'd like it to be. But I don't know what else to do.
And you can only do one teacher at a time within that type of a system?
But in a normal intercom system, that's all you ever do anyways. You don't call a group of rooms and say, hey, would you please send Johnny to the office? So I think that should be covered with zone paging and telephone, or worst case, we hopefully live on Simplex for another couple of months. But it's a ton of money. Have I mentioned that yet?
So with this system, thinking about future, is it able to tie in to like new construction and tie the schools together or what?
Correct, because with the Epic system, with the audio enhancement, classroom sound enhancement systems, which that's the brand that we're replacing right now with, we're just doing a cheaper version than we have to buy for this system. All it needs is a network connection. Into the room, we don't need specialized wiring, we don't need those speakers anymore because we're using the four little ones, you know, there's, so yeah, it's, it's very easily expandable. We can expand in time to the entire district.
So if, how, how long would it take to install it? Let's say you did, you did get the Cadillac version of this.
The traditional classroom sound enhancement system that we've been installing, which includes a microphone and the amplifier and the receiver of the microphone, it's been taking us about 45 minutes a room. Actually installed. I don't see this system taking a lot more time than that. The only different connection is plugging in a network cord.
Sure.
Which we already have run into the room. So there isn't any really infrastructure cabling that needs to be done. So if we use a local electrician, I think we can have the electrician do a couple of them in the morning before school starts. And then do a couple of them after school, after students leave on Mondays through Thursdays. Where if we hire somebody to come in, not only are we paying 105,000 dollars for it, they're gonna wanna come into a building and work front to back while they're here. Which means we either not have school those days or they do it over Christmas break.
So, were you done, I'm sorry?
No, yeah.
Okay. So, the difference between, you know, when you, when you talk about the safety, this is gonna be, give everybody a dongle or whatever.
A microphone to wear.
A microphone thing to wear, which would quickly, if there's a shooter, for example.
Right.
A quick, a quick duress signal.
Yep.
Done. Right now, what is, what, let's say, let's say school starts in September and we don't have this in yet, what, what does a teacher have to do?
They have to go to their phone and call the office.
Okay. And do they have, how do they, they just call the office and then what happens? Then the office calls the police and then it, as opposed to saying something?
Then it goes into the emergency protocols of, of the school district.
So you're talking about, it would probably, would it take minutes versus seconds? I mean, what, what is the, what is the, the speed of response time, would you say, compared to what it is now?
I think it would be 25% the time presently would be to get an acknowledgement from the office that it's missing someplace. That is a guess on my part.
Sure.
I have no foundation for that, but I'm just thinking of the time it takes for a teacher to walk across the room, to stop teaching, walk across the room, dial 9600 versus pushing two buttons on their microphone. And a little, you know, when you dial, it always takes a little bit of time before the other end starts ringing.
So when you, when you hit the button and you say the duress words?
You don't have to say anything, you hit the buttons and it shows red on the screen for your room.
It's just like a bank alarm then, that's what, I've always wondered why we haven't had something like that since I've been here.
The one thing Audio Enhancement is working on, but not released yet, is if you have your microphone on around your neck, if you're anywhere in the school building, it'll geolocate you. Presently, it's just in your classroom. There's pros and cons to that, I know, but.
Great mother watching. Well, I mean, just for, I, I would imagine they could turn that on if you're hitting the duress button, then it, you know, then it geolocates you.
Right, it's not gonna, no, it's not gonna follow you around the building, you have to hit the two magic buttons at the same time to get that to work out.
Which is important because now even if they may not be in their classroom and they're down in the hall and they hit that, it's a better location.
Right, if they're in the auditorium or if they're out on the football stadium or, you know.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess my opinion is, I mean, having the worst case scenario, a shooter in our schools is, is probably all of our worst nightmares.
Yeah.
And the fact that we don't have a system that's that quick right now, honestly, I, I'd rather just buy it ahead of the grant, I mean, that's my opinion. It'll be a system that we're, we might be getting anyways down the road, especially if it can expand to other schools if we build another school. I don't, and we have, we have money in our general fund to do it, I just don't know why, I mean, we, we could, we could wait for the grant, but do we wanna take that risk? Not saying that, I know that something's gonna happen, but, I mean, Murphy's Law, I guess.
So on our agenda today, is it approved, are we approving the quote for just the first component?
The paging system.
Correct.
That's what I was asking for.
Yes.
But I was giving, trying to give you the whole picture.
Yeah.
And there's two pieces I haven't mentioned yet.
Assuming we're all good with that piece.
Can I ask some questions? And that's what I wanted, okay, so Mike, on your quote here, just so I make sure I understand this right. So Auto Enhancement's quote to us to install is 68, 66,833,29 cents.
Installed for paging only.
Oh, yeah, correct, and, but what I'm, what I'm asking then is, so Brothers up above is giving us that same quote, but to do both buildings, they're asking for 226.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
But that includes talk back paging in all classrooms.
Well, that includes talk back paging.
Yep, minus some speakers, but yes.
And right now, teachers cannot, oh yeah, they can't talk back.
Certain parts of the building are fine.
Yes, certain ones are, yeah.
Other parts of the building are real iffy. And it's that iffy part that makes me nervous as heck. The other two pieces that haven't, aren't included, that could be added on, the foundation would be a great source of funding, is one is lights. So putting lights in, discreet lights up in the corner in a classroom, that would be red, yellow, whatever we decide to make an emergency, medical emergency in the building color, or green is good. Cause then some code yellows can go a long time.
So then the staff would know, there's something cooking in the building and then...
There, there is yellow light on in their classroom. Or a red light.
Or a flashing red light.
Yeah, or a flashing white light, which is fire, to get out.
Yep.
So I mean, that's part of it, the other part of it is, they call a view path, which the teacher can control, and it's a camera in the classroom. So in the emergency situation, they pushed the two buttons and we had view path, that camera would start recording 24/7. Now, cameras in classrooms is a whole bailiwick that I'm not ready to go into, but that's some of the features that this company, this is all they do, is K-12 sound enhancement.
And how far away are they from us, their service, if they had to service this, or we has issues?
State club, Sartell.
Sartell, okay.
Is where our servicing agent is.
Okay.
The company is based in Jordan, South Jordan, Utah, which is between Provo and Salt Lake City, according to Google Maps. So that's what I have.
Yeah, any other questions, Mike?
So if we were to approve the intercom, if we were to do that now, that's not gonna affect what you get the grant or nothing, I said, well, you already paid for it, we're not gonna give you the grant because we already paid for it.
We didn't have paging in the grants.
Paging was not in the grant, just the intercom, that's why we're, that's why the classroom sound enhancement is split off.
So they, but they would be able to install the paging though in before the beginning of school year?
They are going to try their hardest, I haven't got a firm, yes, it can be done. That's what I have, other questions? All have great questions.
I can see the, I mean, so you're talking about, you're talking about cameras in classrooms, we've had cameras in classrooms because of COVID and, and we won't bring anything like that, and we may have more of that now with, with, if we go and grab some of those snow days, it'll become, be learning days. So, I can see there's be some value to being able to turn on, well, basically, it's almost like a body cam, so you're saying.
The, the teachers' union is gonna have a different interpretation of that.
Right, but if you have a behavioral incentive.
Right.
Where it's, where a teacher feels threatened or something, I can see where there's be some value to that.
Yes, very, very definitely. They actually present, Sound Enhancement, or Audio Enhancement presented that to us, golly, must be about 15 years ago now. And the thought of, the teachers' thought of having a camera in their classroom, technology has improved in 15 years, but.
Yep, I understand.
It's just outdated. Can you be done? Kid?
Thanks. All right, we'll move on to our general consent items.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'll go over quickly the personnel items on here and everyone has them in front of them on the agenda also. Support staff resignations, we have a number of special education care professionals, Scott Meldahl, which we'll see hired later on in a different capacity, Amanda Duno and Candice Olson, those are all resigning over the summer, and then Heather Johnson, a student support aide, she's resigning from that position, but will also be taking on a different position beginning during the school year. Support staff hires, speaking of Heather, here she is, she's going to become a special education care professional at Adams, and we have Levi Schiller, a custodian, he'll begin full-time effective 8/15, and Cheryl Peterson, she'll begin half-time effective 9/5/23. Certified staff resignation, Cassie Ernstson, middle school art teacher at Kennedy Secondary School, and then on the certified staff hires, we have Angela Nord, she'll become a special education teacher here at Kennedy Secondary School in our middle school level, Scott Meldahl, fax teacher at Kennedy Secondary School, and then Peyton Skomson, who currently is a teacher, language arts teacher here, his contract is going to be increasing by basically one class, one quarter, .0833 FTE, and so he'll be teaching a one FTE total beginning this fall. So I would request the board to approve those personnel items.
Could I get a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
On a second?
Second, go ahead Steve.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Those items are approved. So we'll move on to new business, we have approval of a construction bid package for Lincoln's, Lincoln Phase Two project contingent upon a successful pre-award interview of the contractor to confirm the bid amount and construction schedule. Could I get a motion to approve that bid package?
And Preston will address the board at this point.
Perfect, hold on.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, kind of an exciting night as we opened the bids for this construction project and the bids came in favorable compared to how we thought they might, so that's always a good thing, you know, in our world right now, it's a little bit of an uneven scenario with how bids come in, so very excited to be here tonight. One is, I've sent out a packet of information, assuming that you all have had a chance to review that, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, but I have a few points that I'd just like to highlight as well. There were 24 bid packages that were bid and, you know, part of the success of this is to make contractors aware of the project, so we actually contacted 240 different local and regional contractors to make them aware of the project, ask them if they have any questions and/or ask them to bid the project. We also do put it on to construction exchanges where contractors can go to get the documents. We had 108 that showed interest in the project, and then we did receive 70 separate bids for, at the bid opening. There were six alternates that were identified and the alternates were, for the most part, giving us some flexibility in case we did have a little bit of a budget issue with the bids coming back in, so it wasn't that these were things that we were wanting to add, these were things that were important to have, but just to separate out those costs, and I'll go through those in a little bit as we get into the rest of the detail. But all of these construction bids will be passed through directly to the, directly with the school district, so the contracts will be written directly with the school. So the numbers that you see tonight will be the actual amounts that those contracts will be bid for. As always, when we get the bids, there's always a few clarifications that we need to go through, sometimes a contractor will enter a, a number that is a little bit questionable where it falls into, those are kind of typical, we've sorted through and weighted through those. A couple of examples there is, we had two contractors that bid excavation and the Batumans paving, where it was the base bid plus the alternate, and we had one contractor that put his alternates into one bid package as opposed to splitting them into the separate excavation, but it's fairly clear that, you know, when we look at the total where those numbers come in, so even though the bid form and the bid recap show they didn't bid an alternate, they did in the previous bid package. Confusing, but we've gone through it all to, to verify that. Another one is that we had the HVAC contractor that did correctly identify his alternate pricing, but he wrote on the wrong line, so we know that he referenced it, so we know that it's there and the number's correct, it's just that it's an informality that we reviewed and approved. So what I'll be asking for tonight is approval of the base bid sections, and then we'll go through the alternates, and I did a recommendation of which alternates I, I would suggest that you look at and, and accept, and again, most of those were part of the base project as we understood them, but we did want separate pricing. We've talked to, almost all of these contractors are ready to clarify their bid, and there are a couple, 10A and 12A, that are small amounts, so relatively insignificant, that we haven't heard back yet from the contractor. Section 21A, the fire protection, the low bidder asked to withdraw his bid, and as you looked at the results, there, he obviously made a mistake in his bid, he was, less than half of the other two bids were received, and as he looked at it, he realized that they missed a bunch of components, so there's a letter in the packet that was requesting that bid to be withdrawn, and we believe that would be the appropriate thing to do. And then there were two sections that we did not receive bids for joint ceilings and landscaping, and so I've included an allowance number in the total budget recap, but it's things that we will go out and get quotes for later, they're well within the quote margin that we have and are able to do that. And then two sections that oftentimes we, we either don't get bids or, or they're incomplete. Landscaping is a prime example, where contractors in that world hesitate to bid on something that's a year away because they really don't know what that pricing is, and again, it's a pretty minor scope of work, so we'll go out and get quotes at a later time. So we've listed all the sections, their base bid and which contractor we're recommending, but they are somewhat contingent upon what alternate that you select, and primarily the roofing is the one that is, one of those that we have to decide on one or the other. And then we do have, as I mentioned, that informality in excavation and paving, it depends on which, if the alternate three is accepted, then HOG would be the contractor that we have recommended, if the alternates are rejected, then we would have two different contractors, and I can explain that if we go through it, but again, the alternates were based upon things that we wanted in the project, we just wanted the pricing. So the first alternates to talk about are the roofing package, the base bid was to have associated roofing that would go along with the new mechanical system, so that base bid is relatively small, but then we wanted to, to look at replacing the entire roof over in that building under an LTFM project, and so we looked at it two ways, one was to, to do a, a total redo of the roof, so take all the insulation off, all the, the existing roofing and then replace that with new insulation and with a new roofing. But we found in past experience and, and actually from conversations with contractors too, that in most cases, there's an amount of insulation that's just fine up on your existing roof, so why tear it off to throw it away and then replace it? So we did ask for a cost to assume an amount of existing roofing that they can utilize and add on to, and so that assumption was made in alternate 1B, and as you can see, it's a, a pretty significant cost savings to do that. And so I, I would be recommending that we would not accept alternate 1A, which is to take the insulation off, throw it away and put new stuff on, but to add to the existing insulation that's there, saves the district money, good for the environment, all those kinds of things, but then I did also include an allowance in the overall budget for areas that we might find that insulation might need to be replaced, if there was water damage over a period of time, sometimes that insulation gets wet and needs to be replaced, and so we'll, we'll handle that as an as-needed basis, we may not spend any of that money, but it's there to buffer that if we do find that. Any questions on the roofing alternate? Does that make sense? Alternate 2A was to add new acoustical ceiling tile in the existing hallways for, for a number of reasons, that was suggested, that that would be a good enhancement to your current work, or current build-out that's in the building already, and so that add would be 31,165 dollars, and we would be recommending to accept that. Alternate 2B was to extend the existing hallway walls up to the ceiling deck, that's a sound enhancement for the existing classrooms, which should make that a much better sound equation than what you currently have in that space. Alternate, that add is 77,155 dollars, we're recommending to accept that. Alternate 3 is the new access road that connects Pioneer Road to the existing parking lot area for the bus traffic in and out. Again, that was something that really was identified as, as a need for the project, but a separate cost, just to know what that number was, and that total add is 173,016 dollars. And again, if we accept alternate 3, then our recommendation for HOG of Detroit Lakes as the contractor would, would be the low qualified bid in both sections, excavation and Batumans paving. And then alternate 4 was new sound attenuation panels and baffles in the existing cafeteria, again, to help control the sound and the noise in that space, and so that add was 36,000 dollars. So if you approve any or all of these alternates, then those would get added to the base price that's listed on the previous page into a final contract. And all of those costs then are represented on this sheet in the budget page, which is the total budget. And again, in that, I've included that allowance for roof insulation of 84,000, I also have the furniture fixture and equipment allowance that was established for the budget and a playground equipment, those kind of show up at the, the bottom of the areas, and again, those are allowance items for you to, to determine what amount of furniture that you wanna place in the new classrooms and, and the type of playground equipment. You can obviously spend a lot more and a lot less in that, but it gives you a starting point, and that's kind of what we had talked about in the initial budget process. So you will see that if you do accept all of the alternates as recommended, our total bottom line then comes to 11,264,855 dollars, or against the established budget of, of 12 million, that was kind of the benchmark that we had coming into this, it is under budget by 735,000 dollars, so, you know, very happy that we're talking about under that amount rather than how we're gonna address it and, and get back to that amount.
Preston, can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
Right there, on your soft costs?
Yes.
Hey, when I look at the one line and I look at the other line, they're exactly the same. same. Is that correct?
From one to the other. The soft costs, a lot of those are kind of, and I'll use our fees as an example, we have a fixed fee arrangement, so whether it included, and it was based on the original $12 million budget. So that amount would be the same in either case. The miscellaneous owner expenses and builder's risk insurance, all of those are things that really didn't change regardless of how the bids turned out.
Okay, okay.
Assuming I have the architectural fee correct. And that's one thing I will suggest that we probably relook at, because if they're on a percentage base...
So our fee goes down. I just want to point that out. Because the bids gave it less. We're based on, and we're okay with that. I mean, that's, you know, it's a great thing to have a project come in under budget like this, and, you know, we're comfortable with the fact that we didn't, you know, fix our fees. This kind of thing happens more often than hopefully the other thing where, than you're having to figure out how to find extra fees. We have fixed our fees when prices have come up, come over, just to help out a project, but in this case, it's, we're happy to take a little less fee since it's under budget.
And then we also are carrying a construction contingency of $500,000 for the project. Again, that's an amount that's there, if it's not spent, great.
So actually, the bids come in $500,000 less than that $11,264. So the bids actually have $10,764, and then you've got the contingency on top of that. Right? The contingency is included in the $11,264.
It is, yes.
So the bids actually came in closer to $10,008.
Well, the bids themselves, if you looked at the upper portion, the estimated total cost, came in at 8.9 million with all of the alternates accepted.
Right.
Yep.
I guess what I'm getting at is if we have a $500,000 contingency, that $500,000 is included in the $11,264.
It is.
So that comes out to about 4.64. And then if we have 12 million available financing, then that gives us about a 14% contingency if we ever have...
Oh, if you were to say everything up to that point, yes, I got you.
It wouldn't be a 4%. And that's our cushion, so to speak, of comfort in what the bids are compared to what we have financed.
And kind of an add-on to that point is that when we had worked with the Department of Education, we had split all of the costs into different sources of funds. And for the most part, they're very similar to what we had projected. The abatement bond category, which is primarily parking lots and the driveways, that number, we won't get up to the amount that had been originally budgeted at $1,005,000. So with this project, we would not be, I guess, utilizing all of that abatement bond. So it does open a question that if you wanted to or had the need to spend monies on parking lots in other parts of your district, you've got some flexibility there to add to that abatement bond product or, you know, allocation and still be within what you've already approved. Did I say that correctly?
Yep.
And then in that sources and uses of funds, we, there are some flexibilities in the soft costs of that and where we put things. So if I'm underspent or overspent in categories, we can take the contingencies or the general conditions and kind of shift them around a little bit to get to the right amount that you've allocated for those uses. That's a lot of talk, a lot of numbers, and a lot of information. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
One other question, just on the bid and then timelines on, for work to start and process through. Did I take it they've seen a timeline too of, oh, this is so that they know kind of what they are?
Yes.
Okay.
In the specifications, there was a schedule that we published, and basically, we will be starting construction, I'll say early fall, like end of September, early October, with the idea that we would have this completed in June or July of next year. So you give your staff time to get in there, get settled in, and be ready for back to school. Now, we'll be talking with contractors if there are any materials that we have issues with as far as lead times. We haven't gotten into that deep discussion yet. But right now, most of that is either mechanical or electrical. And, you know, basically, we have a year from now, if we tell contractors, go ahead and order, to when we would have to have them installed. So that seems comfortable, although some of the electrical components might let it a little bit.
And go ahead. Let me see your question. The only other question I have is just the bid process itself and local bids. I mean, I've seen the numbers and stuff like that, and maybe it's just our process that we have to change in ourselves is how we advertise our actual going out for bids for schools on this project like this, is just to make sure that our local contractors. I mean, I did see that, that we do have local contractors, which is good.
Yeah.
I just think there's some local contractors that did not hear about it for whatever reason, and just maybe we need to do it on our, on our actual site or Facebook or something like that to change how we, maybe even us, how we do it in Fergus. Because I'm not blaming on, because you don't know who's going to bid, and I don't know who's going to bid until the bids are open.
Yeah.
And then you, all of a sudden, you get the, oh, they didn't bid, why is that? And then you're like, okay. And then, and that's the part that I guess maybe our process of how we do it, even like the Fergus Falls School District and how the process we do it, we might need to look at doing that.
It is advertised in the local newspaper. It is also on any local exchanges. It might be a good exercise for us to get, you know, those names from you so that we can make sure that if they were on our list or if we missed them on our list, because we've got a pretty extensive list of contractors in every area, not to say that that list isn't complete, we might have missed a few, but it is important to get them.
I think one easier way to do it would be to, well, especially in this case, we've already done phase one, so are there any bidders, are there any contractors that worked on phase one at Lincoln that didn't submit a bid for some reason? I think that would cut a couple of them for sure.
If I could add something to, I did see in the paper, but I don't know that I saw the scopes of work listed in there. And so a local vendor or, I mean, local company may have not known exactly what to bid on. So to me, if it would have listed out, you know, the plumbing, electrical, flooring, the different pieces, it might have given them a little bit more information on the different parts of it to bid on.
Okay. I guess that wouldn't be typical of the ads that we see going out for bid, but that's could be a way to do that, sure.
That was just my thought for those that weren't on the construction exchange that you have.
But not complaining about the bids themselves.
No, no.
Just saying our process of just ourselves and just, you know...
That is important. That's why we called 240 contractors, but again, we might have missed some that, for whatever reason, didn't show up on our list or on our radar of people. Maybe they're changing a business name, or maybe, you know, in the past have told us that this isn't the kind of work that they do, and maybe they do now. So maybe that's some of it. And I did give you a list of all the contractors that did bid, and you can see how they compare.
So tonight, I'm understanding this right, our first motion is to approve the base package? And the second motion will be to approve any upgrades that we want to add?
Recommended alternates.
Yep. Okay.
Just because there is an instance or two where if you don't accept an alternate, it would change who the contractor is, you might want to just do the alternates first, if that's okay? That way, if you do accept all the alternates as I've recommended, then the base bid will be just fine.
Yep.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100. Okay, so our first item then would be to approve the approval of an alternate bid package for Lincoln Phase Two contingent upon a successful pre-award interview of the contractor to confirm the bid amount and construction schedule. And we would be looking at accepting alternate 1B, would be the re-roofing and adding insulation where needed. Alternate 2A, adding new ACT ceiling in the existing hallways. Alternate 2B, extending existing hallway walls to the deck. Alternate 3, new access road connecting Pioneer Road to the revised building, new road. And then alternate 4, new sound attenuation panels and baffles in the existing pre-kid So could I get a motion to approve that alternate bid package?
So moved.
In a second.
I'll second that.
Any additional discussion? All in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. That alternate bid package is approved then. And then we'll move to the approval of a construction bid package for Lincoln Phase Two project contingent upon a successful pre-award interview of the contractor to confirm the bid amount and construction schedule. Could I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion to approve that as outlined in the memo from our board.
Could I get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on that piece? All in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. That bid is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the approval of quote for KSS Roosevelt paging System. And we're talking about just that initial paging package.
I think it was $66,000, something like that.
So I am moved that we approved that tech check, audio enhancement for $66,832.
Could I get a second? Any more discussion on that? All in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. Quote is approved. Then we will move on to revisions to the 2023-2024 IQ Academy Calendar. Could I get a motion to approve those revisions?
So moved.
In a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
It's primarily just to line up the grad graduation.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
And then our days that we switch, that December 22nd.
Yep, and, yep.
And April 5th.
Correct, just to match up to the high school or to the school district.
All in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. All right, that calendar is approved, or those revisions are approved. So our next regular school board meeting is Monday, August 24th. Could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
In a second.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. We are adjourned. Okay.